I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Quiggle.
All right. Quiggle. Did everyone get a chance to go over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
I understand the motion.
Move to approve.
Move is in second, all is in favor. All right. Board of Works, info only. Any questions on that? Is sure I can answer them? Okay. Ted asked me if we could push the Minno Creek discussion to the next meeting because they're still doing some investigation on that MOU. Does anyone have any issue with that? Do we need to make that a motion, Andy?
Why don't you make a motion to postpone until the name?
I entertain a motion to postpone the Minno Creek resolution from the discussion until next meeting?
I'll second.
Move in second, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Okay. Review of naming city streets.
That was a...
We have that information.
That was a report for this. That was the last meeting. Yes, it was memorandum that Attorney Perkins had put together because we've had a couple of questions on what the process is of renaming public streets or naming public streets that are not named. So Attorney Perkins put that together for us to kind of review. I don't know that we really need any official action on that tonight other than just kind of just his investigation of the process and who the authority actually would be. Because we've had a question, the Board of Works are council. So in your opinion, it's council correct? If I read that correctly?
Counsel, because there is no ordinance specifically delegating that to Board of Works, which the council could do.
Any other discussion needed on this?
I don't think at this time, I don't know that we have anything evident right now to move forward with.
No, I don't think so unless if someone decides that you want to see what ordinance look like, like that would look like to, so it doesn't, they don't ever come in front of you again.
Is that something we'd like to do is kick that over to the Board of Works? Or do you want to be the one naming the streets, Joe?
Oh, I could have some fun with that one.
I can't say, I can't say it's that frequent, so.
No, it is not. It is really rare that it happens, but it has been coming up. And as, I think as developments start cropping up around the city, I think we're going to see more and more of that because we've got areas that have a platted road or street but don't necessarily have a name. And so I think we need to have a process, but.
But isn't it, it seems like Board of Works would be more appropriate.
I agree.
They just seems to be more appropriate.
So then I, we're asking you to draft, can you draft something out for us?
Yeah, sure, I can draft that. Discuss the next month then.
So we have one resolution tonight since we're tabling the Minno Creek. So any, any questions, discussions on this? It's pretty self-explanatory. It's our virtual meeting policy.
I didn't have any.
I entertain a motion for the reading of Resolution 4 of August 2022.
But that alone?
It's up to you, you make the resolution.
It's a, it's a resolution, you technically don't even have to read it, any part of it, you can just pass the resolutions.
I don't like that.
Here, here.
You got my piece, John.
We've been reading this all this time.
So moves in my motion.
To just adopt?
Adopt.
To what you vote for, I guess.
All right. So move in second, it all is in favor? All right.
Okay.
Looks like Air Force One Department had.
Just pretend I'm not here and carry on. You've got my report.
We've got your report.
He's doing reports for all departments.
No, sorry. I can probably, probably give you a close rundown on what they're going to say. For the month of March, 17 accidents, 23 warnings, 56 offenses, 41 case reports, 817 calls for service, 19 lockouts, four towed vehicles, and 20 people in car trade. List of crimes, list of people lost for. Other than that, we've got Brady Briggs going to the academy, he starts Monday. We've still got Bryce Michael in FTO, he's not ready to be on his own yet. And then we're still down one officer. We need to hire one more. We had our last process, we had three applications turned in, and we unfortunately didn't have anybody that we felt was, would be a good fit for the department. One of them drew his application, the other two need a little more life experience. We're going to have to start over. I don't expect it to be any better this time, but we're going to start over and try. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
Any questions for Chief? Thank you. Okay, now the reported committees. Harry, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. You guys haven't spent anywhere near enough money, so I'm here to present some opportunities.
Wow.
Don't joke.
Just let Martin know, how am I to check?
That's what Shana likes to hear.
You notice I kind of wasn't taking it here from a car at the moment. Thanks, Harry.
Well, just kind of wanted to give you guys a quick update on our facade grant. Our current fund balance is $11,378.79. That's the money we use to help stimulate facades. And at this point, I don't think of, unless there's, you know, several projects that come forward in the next few months, I don't anticipate us running out of money this year. But, you know, if we do, we'll come back with a request for that. Last year, we distributed $20,750 in facades, which stimulated $32,579 of construction, plus if you include the MSRP project, it gets to $606,000 of facade work that was done last year that was partially stimulated by the MSRP project. With me today, I do have a couple chairs of our RDP board. Christine Walsh chairs our promotions committee, and Chad Heisey chairs our design committee. And we have a couple projects for this year that we are here to kind of request you guys consider releasing some of the money that's been budgeted for RDP for this year. First project is a, I guess best way to call it, maybe awayfinding signs that we have created for downtown, just kind of earmarking out on the points of entry into the community, how to get to downtown. This project is being, you know, eventually we would like to see several additional wayfinding signs in town, but this is kind of the start of, this is kind of highlighting where downtown is. There's other big needs, we believe, for wayfinding that points out points of interest throughout the community with some type of common look. We, well, probably two or three years ago, we actually, pre-pandemic, whatever that was, you know, we had a consultant that kind of gave us some pie in the sky numbers, and at that time, it was just decided to do nothing. But we've kind of taken it internally and developed a project since that period of time, and we're making the signs locally. Chad company Keyon Screen Printing is doing the vinyl for them, and Craig Welding is doing the actual metal construction of the sign. And I think the county is either going to sell us a cost or donate the sign posts. These will be put in, just like any other street sign is put in, like a stop sign or any type of sign that'll have a snap off, you know, basically a socket goes in the ground and then a post goes inside that socket and somebody hits it with a vehicle, it just snaps off. Chad's got a map of where we're going to, we are going to be putting these signs, and we took some photos of what the area, kind of looks like, so you can kind of get a visual what the sign will look like when it's placed.
Any else need more?
I'm impressed with the way you can do this, Chad.
Chad is working really hard on this project. This is kind of what the sign will look like. With a directional arrow of some form. And it's going to be reflective.
Yeah, reflective vinyl.
Yeah, we've got some. So it kind of follows the theme of what the state does with information signs and the brown look.
Now, Harry, is that, and will that be an issue with the state since they do DNR signs and stuff like that with brown? That wasn't an issue to them? Because I know you guys were talking to them with the...
No, we've been talking with them, and they have locations and so forth as to where they're going, and they've kind of given their blessing on, that's what we've outlined. Basically, it's all the entry points, as you come in, the whole 31, as you're sitting there, and the exit ramps off 25, no matter which direction, and out by hardest to print.
Out that Estmore Park Road and 14, and 14 coming in from the west there before you get to see the S.
Will these need to be, how often would they need to be replaced or re, I don't know how long the material?
Thinking two to four years might be. I've, I've heard Estman's as well as two recently, but I, I saw a lot of dumpster decals and so forth that are lasting four to five years. Depends on sun exposure.
Okay.
It would just be like you could apply a new vinyl to it and just rejuvenate it, you know, after it's in place, so it wouldn't be as expensive.
That would, because that was going to be a maintenance, I'm thinking maintenance moving forward as far as budgeting goes, so when we think we need to put that into the budget, if the council approves this, that, you know, what we would need to look at in two to four years.
And do you have the costs on that?
So looking at all the costs, the metal signs, the price right now, if we wait longer, price will go up. Price of metal is going up very fast, eighty dollars a piece, so you have $480. Cost on the vinyl is roughly $20 per sign, printing the signs is, is 35 is what I propose. Posts, like the county told us they're $100 each. We're hoping to get county to provide those for us. And then installation, hopefully the county's going to help us out there, but cost would be basically $100, basically a day going out, installing signs, times to write about $1,500.
Well, it looks really nice, you guys have done a great job.
How many more signs we can work in the end?
Well, you know, if we start getting into directional signs, then it will just be kind of a matter of prioritizing where we need them and then maybe take on a few a year kind of thing. You know, I, I think one of the glaring ones is there's really not much of, it's very hard to find our high school, it's hard to find our swimming pool at the high school because people go to the school, go to the high school pool, and it's in the middle school, you know, there's, there's needs for things like that, identifying where the city pool is, the library.
Library.
So some of those would be in, in town, the parking lots for the city could be identified. So we haven't really dove into that as far as what exact locations there are, but there's definitely some need for that stuff. And if this, this type of sign works well, definitely way more affordable than what, I mean, we were looking at $14,000 to $20,000 for this one company to do all this, so.
Yeah, I remember that.
Some of the locators would be, I'm not sure how, would attach anything to the post, but say as example for number five, if we put a sign for ballparks or whatever down that road, it wouldn't, you wouldn't need them on anything else, but for that one there, people coming in from town will be able to look and see, that's where you turn around, pass, go and pass it and turn around from the driveway and go back. Is that something you had looked at at all?
No, we haven't really looked at anything except just identifying the town at this point, the town area.
That starts home.
Well, actually that, I'm sorry, I was going to say, that's actually not, I mean, that's a good idea because if you've already got the location identified, adding, you know, black or soccer fields and softball diamonds, same direction on that same location since it's already approved by NBOB.
Yeah, is it something you could just put another plate on underneath it maybe?
Perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a single post, we decided to go with a single post versus double post. There were some recommendations that this county gave us, the size of the sign that prevent it from getting wobbly.
Too much.
You can get too, too big a sign, then you can get this thing going in the wind.
Easier mull around too.
Yeah, that's true.
We didn't look that up.
I think the directional signs for all those other things usually tend to have a, you know, a smaller header and then three or four somethings, you know, but it'll probably have a little different look than this one.
We didn't look at a much larger sign, and it would, you know, the cost of the metal for the sign itself goes twice as much, and then you would require two poles instead of one, and as you would say, kind of back down, abnormal stop signs, 24 by 24, this is 24 inches wide, 28 tall.
That's a good, I mean, that's because I signed, you don't need to sign any bigger than that.
I was just in there looking at it thinking, yeah, if you're coming down highway at 60 mile an hour, you, you're going to see it.
For these, right, you're going to get a ticket.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, in a couple of locations.
What timeframe are you looking for? Like, you know, you're looking for something tonight, and we get you started, or are you looking for us to get this in our budget for next year, what?
Oh, no, we'd like to proceed with that this, this summer, and I think the money's budgeted.
Yes.
Yep. So we just need to vote.
You know, just allocating or?
Yeah, they've got, for this, they actually, we actually have appropriations in two different funds with RDP kind of associated to it. So redevelopment commission is one area, typically that's used for their facade grant projects. We can do the signs from there or not. The other one is economic development. So, I mean, either fund they've got.
It's a pleasure of the council. I entertain a motion to allocate the funds. So.
Second.
All right, so move in second, all is in favor, proceed if I raise my hand.
Thank you.
And then the, the second request is involving our summer festival that we're going to have on this, on July 27th. And it's a second edition of the Bickle Plate Art and Music and Art Festival.
You said August 27th?
Yes.
Go ahead. What you got lined up on that?
It's similar to last year, where we have free art projects for kids. Last year, we had about six of them, and then we have five musicians. Most of them are local. Last year, we had a reggae band, this year, we're going to have Latin duo.
Times?
This year, it's 11 to 10. Well, they'll be set up early, but the actual festival is 11 to 10.
Okay.
Also, I talked with the United Way, and they'd like to do a 5K run with that too. They did it with the Chili Cook-Off, but I believe that they're going to do it with me this year.
Refresh my memory, did we just block off A Street from Main to Madison?
I think that's all we did.
Yeah, we didn't block off Main.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, most of the entertainment was on the courthouse lawn.
Right, that's the same.
That same, would we're just that section blocked off?
Say there's five different bands throughout, kind of dagger throughout the day, and then there's a DJ there all day.
Is there any projects downtown this summer that's going to interfere with or that might be a conflict?
Possibly the stormwater, but we're starting the stormwater project from second to sixth.
So, okay.
So we should be okay with that, other than potential construction traffic, but I think it can be utilized.
If it's starting here, it will be a problem, I don't think.
And the, the remaining nine streetlights that we need to replace.
Around the courthouse?
Yeah, those should, as long as materials come in, I think we're still waiting, I think we're still waiting on the poles. Here we go, the metal. But it's anticipated, they should have, I wish Randy was here, they should, it should have been started by now, but I would anticipate that to be done by August.
I would hope so.
I think we have to bore and kill the whole project.
Well, the streetlights are right around the courthouse, so it would just be a matter of making sure we have safe, that safety measures in place, that if there is something.
Plus up any concrete or anything like that would be the only concern.
Yeah.
Pray it's time for...
Yeah, I mean, at this point.
Yeah. So the total, what's, how much are the bands or?
What, the total of everything or the breakdown of things?
Go ahead, you can break down.
Okay, so the, the total of the bands is about 3,000. One band comes from Chicago, so they're a little higher. We have to pay our sound guy, who's there the entire day. I have two chalk artists coming from Fort Wayne to draw on the ground. Also, it, on August 27th, it is National Tarzan Day, so we will have a little bit of a jungle theme that day, and Elmo Lincoln was the first Tarzan who was born here, so we're trying to incorporate that a little bit as well.
Yes, that's funny.
So the chalk artists, they're about, they're 12 or 16, I have to relook that up, but essentially what I'm asking for is $5,500 from our funds to cover.
That way we can lock everything in.
So that come out of?
Economic development.
Okay. I move that we release those funds?
I'll second.
Okay, so move in second, all those in favor, proceed if I raise my hand in the right hand. Awesome.
Very much.
Thank you.
Clank your hand.
Is that it?
Yeah. Any other questions?
We're taking our reason, we're leaving, let's go. Yeah, no, it's like a run. Let's go. Give us votes, yes.
No, no, no.
Sorry, we'd like to wait this board position, a eight seat.
If I have to do your attention for a minute, though, we are doing a fundraiser, expense of Board of Works and everything, but they're going to have on the light poles in town, we're selling home around hero banners for veterans. People can go through the chamber, if you have a picture of a loved one, veteran at some point somewhere, can send us an email. I'm going to work with the library, see if we can set up for scanning and make an email with a picture. Again, can have screen printing, we'll be printing the banners, and we're going to have them hang up from, when Christmas decorations go down, so the, that's the children's art.
There are banners.
There are banners about the name, and after that's over, the names will take the banners home. That's, just giving the word out about that project for us.
It's similar to what, is it Peru that does that?
Yeah, a lot of communities do. So we'll have order forms available at Chamber Office, American Legion, BFWU.
Any idea how much the banners are now?
$150.
That's not bad.
And they get to keep it when it's all done.
No, it's not bad at all.
Okay, I'm going to be the bearer of bad news with Monkey Ranch.
Okay.
With the project downtown, when we start that stormwater project, I'm not sure how accessible our poles are going to be with our trucks, with the bucket trucks, just because I don't know. So just, I, I don't, I just don't want somebody to be surprised when they come in as you're trying to do the fundraising for this, so as long as everybody understands that. But it's only to Sixth Street, so if we can, depending on how many you get, it will focus.
Well, these won't be this year anyway.
Okay, so this will be next year.
Start next year.
Okay.
When Christmas decorations come down, they'll put these up.
Okay, okay.
And then they'll, might stay up for the rest of the year if they can't get them down.
And the information, just so the RTC, because I'm not sure you speak so softly about the thing, information, all that stuff is available at the Fulton County Chamber Office.
We're going to have press release.
Okay.
In the next couple weeks.
Perfect.
We're getting all their ducks in a row, and you guys are the first to know.
Yeah, we haven't got the forums to those places yet, so.
Just sit tight, we'll see if it's released.
We don't want to tell people to go in there asking for a forum.
Everybody can hear Harry, he talks loud.
Coming soon.
Okay.
David is not here. Ruth, you have anything for area plan?
I just had a few questions that I was late at first, but I had a refrigerator down. My repairman didn't show up until a certain time. But I had a few questions about, somebody wants to put solar panels, and our solar panel code is that, and I don't know the difference between medium, large, and small, but in town, you can only install solar panels for your, your building or whatever, and small, which is two, two, maybe three solar panels. It's Andersons, they need like nine, which then makes it medium. So we kind of started the discussion of, is, is that right? Because you don't want to tell, you don't want to tell the business, no, you don't want, you can't do that because, you know, who cares that you save money? So, so, so they have four different properties that they were going to put solar panels on, so that each property then has a small solar panel area, but one hookup. So does that make that small, or does that make it medium? So we decided...
How old is our ordinance?
Yeah, nobody really knew, so, so I think first we have to tell them no, so we ended up having to tell them no, and then, and, and, you know, so first you've got to tick them off to get things looked at and the conversation getting started, that hey, reality is that something needs to change. Because really, almost... Cause really almost all the solar panels don't need to go, they don't need to go on all four pieces of property. If you didn't have to deal with this code, then you can put solar panels on one property and then somebody else can buy the other property and do something else with it. So it was like, wow, are we screwed up? So, so, you know, but then how many other, how many other areas in the community are going to need that many solar panels within city limits?
Did your discussion also talk about whether they needed to be located on a roof? Or if they can be located in?
Okay, so I said something about a roof because, because Anderson's is a flat roof. Right, so why can't you put them up there? Well, I was told that your roof doesn't get near as much sun as the ground. So I was like, ah, totally messed up my idea because I was thinking the evergreen. I would love to put some panels up on the roof. But apparently there's something about the heat that the solar panels create and then the roof is down here that, that it ruins the roof. And that made sense to me.
Oh, that makes sense, I was just gonna say.
Now, there was no professional solar panel person there. We were just having this discussion.
Because there's a lot of solar panels on roofs. I've, I mean, in other communities, I know Goshen, I believe Goshen went through a big green, uh, or, a few years ago, reorganization of all of their codes.
Most houses, that's the way it's done, you know, you see a whole side of a house covered with solar panels.
Is that part of the, is that part of the comprehensive? So would that be? Cause I know.
Evergreen, so. I have to put it on my roof, that nobody has.
I know, I heard about that tonight.
Wouldn't that have been something that we put in ordinance?
Should be something that, or would be?
Would be put it in the ordinance.
No, the area plan is enforcing or?
Yeah, it is, I mean, because, because they purposely have four lots to put these on so that only three went on each lot. Okay? But in all reality, all nine of them can fit on one lot. So it's like a way to get around code, but do you really want that?
Question in my mind is how old is this ordinance and does it need updated? I mean, cause the technology has changed. I just don't, I don't recall ever talking about this.
Yeah, I think, well, that's what we were just talking about.
You know, it's not your ordinance we're talking about.
Okay, so.
No, we're, we're talking, talking about the difference between a, uh, what is a permitted use and what would require a, and a special exception within the city commercial zoning district. And the problem is small, uh, small or micro solar units are permitted uses. There is no special exception for large or medium, uh, uh, solar uses. So the, the individual issue can't really even request a variance on it. They can conceivably, uh, in theory, they could ask for a rezone, um, some of that property to, to something where it may be allowed, but I think several, several of the parcels had that issue. So it may be something that as we work through the new comprehensive plan, the, the solar components, maybe the plan commissioner would update that, but yeah, that was the issue.
It was a good conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, it really was, it was like, oh, yeah, you know, this is the new era and, and it's something that needs to be looked at now, so.
And just so you know, they're going through their comprehensive plan updates and public hearing process. So I forwarded that information to you guys a month or so ago, I think. That might be part of those conversations.
Anything else?
Not really, I'm just the most interested.
Okay, um, I have the minutes from the FETO meeting, I was unable to attend, but I have the minutes here, so. I met April eighth. The REMC loan agreement was presented and it was, the motion was made for David Heide to sign the agreement with REMC and that's in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars we've had, paid back over ten years and that's to, uh, finish, to, uh, work on the Blackadder project. On the Blackadder project, the materials for the first phase of the water line were delivered. There was, uh, it was about seven to ten day wait for a valve. And there was another seventy-three hundred dollar of additional cost incurred, which the county picked up out of their seat. As far as the paving schedule, that is not firm yet, but it is being talked about. Power Transmission Components is still working on installing machines and as of this meeting, the following week, they're planning on an open house and hiring, which I believe that would be, would have already occurred. The fifty thousand T-Mobile grant was submitted for Rich Investments and we should hear back on that from about thirty to sixty days. FETO is also looking for other grant opportunities for projects. And Tiffany is also currently working on a community foundation grant for twenty thousand dollars to go toward the organizational assessment. Any other questions, that's my report. All right.
Are, are all of those sessions completed where you were looking for public input?
Uh, no, no, they are not. They're, they're gonna continue. I, there has not been a lot of, uh, participation. And the one I signed up for did not make it too, so shame on me. But they are ongoing. If you guys haven't heard, receive one, you should be receiving one by tomorrow.
Hi. I just wondered how they were all going. Okay, Mark Ward.
Hi, BZA and Council on Aging.
You're down to me?
I am.
Well, uh, Council on Aging met yesterday. Wasn't much to report from Transpo, our SVP sold two thousand three hundred green carnations on that March fundraiser. Sounded like a big number to me, but, um, they serviced sixty-five people with tax appointments and, and helped with, uh, those returns. They, they do that at free of charge. They do get some donations. We are having on May sixth and certainly the entire community is invited to a dedication ceremony where the Activity Room, you guys will recall, we granted permission to name the Activity Room at the community center, the Terry Moore Room. That is going to be dedicated on May sixth at twelve thirty. There are going to be snacks and cake and coffee for anybody that comes there.
I'm sorry.
Again, that's May sixth at twelve thirty. And the rides for Transpo are starting to get back to pre-COVID levels. In March of twenty-two, there were two thousand, uh, three hundred and thirty rides given from Transpo. As far as the BZA is concerned, that group meets tomorrow night. There's one item on the agenda, sounds like it'll be a little bit interesting, it's a little bit different. The applicant for the variance wants to split a small property into two small properties for the purpose of building a garage for the neighbor on the small property. And I'm assuming to rent it, I don't, I don't know, but, uh, there is some dissension in the neighborhood and so they're gonna have an interesting. It's on Boulevard Street, twenty, twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-one thirty-two.
So, uh, that's the meeting tomorrow night. Barring questions, that's my report.
Questions for Marty? All right, Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center.
Solid Waste Group did not meet this month, they will be meeting next month. Animal Adoption Group did meet and Janet and Board are doing excellent job as always. One interesting point, they said that they had twice as many animals brought in this quarter in comparison to this time last year. But they've been able to adopt almost all of them out. So, uh, a good job keeping up with things. They are planning to do some spanneur clinics coming up with public and they are gonna be running again the, uh, low income options for people where they cover some of the costs for folks that maybe can't afford that for animals, so, um, yeah, a lot of good things going and I think they'll continue to give us updates as they put things together.
Thank you, any questions? All right, Tree Board EMS.
Tree Board, last week, on the twenty-first, moving along, you're, no plantings are set yet, but they're working on getting things going with that, utilizing the survey that was done. And so we're trying to find out what's need, not what's needed necessarily, but if everybody wants maple trees put in, it always sounds nice until there's a problem, like we had Emerald Ash Bores or anything else that kills all the maple trees. So they're looking to see what we currently have and what would be beneficial to put in to spread things out. They're looking to, sometime, probably next month, to the next tree trimming and removal contractor will go out. And then again, with that survey, they're looking at identifying trees that will need help in the next two, three years and put it on the radar and watch those, what they preventative measures, so hopefully they don't fall down, somebody's caught over house. About it. Our, uh, Arbor Day is still working on getting a, something with that, getting going so we keep Tree City status.
Who's the? Who's?
I'm gonna move that.
The best person to refer somebody to about A, removing a tree or B, what trees to select to plant?
There is a process through, we have either online or they pick up a form here at the City Hall.
Okay.
Get that. And I don't wanna push it off on Chad, but Chad knows all, all right. No, he just, in answering the question is.
To answer the question, yes.
Who's in contact and how they do it online and all that, so.
Yeah, easiest thing is just have a contact City Hall, um, and Brian's right, we, we do have a form online now underneath the Tree Board link that people can go print it off, fill it out and drop it off. It, it still has to come paper form here, um, and they can drop it off and then my staff will scan and email it to the Board for review and then they, then the Board will contact the homeowner.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Do you have to get permission from the city to plant certain trees? I mean, I knew it liked the ash borer and that, or, I've been meaning.
If it's in the tree lawn, if it's outside of the tree lawn and in your own yard, then it would be recommended to find out if there's any invasive species or issues with species. Also, especially where your infrastructure runs into the property, so wherever your sewer and water lines are, you definitely wanna make sure that you don't, um, damage those with whatever tree you plant. Cause some of them have, the one thing with the Tree Board is they can, a lot of times they'll be able to tell you if it's a root system that spreads out or one that goes more straight down, so. I mean, it's, the only one we really regulate is the tree lawn itself, between the sidewalk and the street. Sorry, Brian, did you, I?
No, that's, that answers the question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Any other questions? All right, Water Board.
I missed the last Water Board meeting, um, and as far as I know, I did not get any, uh, any notification from Rachel. So I'm assuming the Water Board meeting made it and everybody was there. Uh, the last I had heard, everything is going fine at the Water Department, but I don't know. I didn't hear that. But I corrected, I corrected the date because she said it, I, I thought it was gonna be on the third of April and I corrected, I just sent back, I said, you know, the third's on the Sunday, I think we're going on the fourth and I got no more, no further communication.
Saying that may be the finest John Garrett Water Board report.
That was awesome.
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna say, the only update we have is the issue that we were running into with the main over at Fox Run.
Oh, yes.
We found the valves. So it's not as big of, uh.
It's not a big deal now, it's good, well, that's good.
Yeah, so there's your good news, Water Board update.
Great. Legal Department.
And I knew we'd do it.
Do not have any doubts.
Any ADA concerns? Great, motion to, obtain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moving second, all's in favor? Thank you.
And I will put a recommendation which person?
We were told it starts in March.
Oh, no, always six, so that's okay.